Monday, and thank you for attending the special meeting for the budget hearings of year two thousand nineteen, twenty twenty. So first, we'll start off with the pledge of allegiance by myself.
Ready to look? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
The acknowledgement of certificate of posting, please.
So moved Mr. Chair.
All in favor?
Aye.
Five zero. Okay, budget hearing schedule. Budget hearings will begin today and will be continuous until completed. Items not completed on Monday, June twenty fourth will resume after the regularly scheduled Board of Supervisors meeting on Tuesday, June twenty fifth and continue daily at nine AM until completed. County administrative officer, please the introduction and opening remarks.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So in your budget book, on page three, there is a CAO letter that you can go ahead and defer to if you like. But I'll go ahead and just highlight some of those, some of the key points that I discussed in that letter is, the first thing I want to do is thank staff and thank all the department heads and the county staff as well as our administrative office for all their hard work. You know, moving forward and putting a budget together is a lot of work. There's been a lot of meetings, a lot of discussions, and I want to thank everybody, just a tremendous amount of work on everyone's part to get to where we're at today. With that highlighting, over the last few years, we've done some really good work on augmenting our general fund reserves, which we mainly receive on the general fund site through property tax allocation. There's some things that were worked on, the Measure G, the business license tax, or Measure H, the business license tax, Measure G, the road repair. And we also have done a lot of work at reducing our outgoing expenditures, which has been a tremendous amount of work on both sides of the ledger. We've also been sharing up our general fund reserves, and one of the key aspects of why we were rated so high with SMP was because of that. So again, those reserves, we've been looking at for emergency purposes as well as for infrastructure needs. So today, we're working hard on also adding revenue sources through economic development, hemp manufacturing revenue, autonomous vehicle park, and addressing our nodes. These are all extremely important and vital to infuse operational revenues within our county, to make it a more sustainable county from an operational point of view. This year's budget's still tight, though. It's still, we haven't really received those revenues yet, and we're still, it's still a very tight budget for the county from an operational point of view. Part of the reason is we've had increases in our fire contract, about seven hundred thousand dollars, and it'll continually go up every year. We've had increases in PERS on the general fund side, almost a half a million, indigent care as well. And we've seen many other increases that have caused this to actually increase for us. Additionally, there's a great need, though, for operations to meet what we need to be doing, and it's been difficult at times. So we did increase our staffing, over ten employees, and Stewart's going to go ahead and highlight all of those employees in this year's budget because there is risk for not doing what we needed to be doing. So it's been really important, so this year's budget highlights that. So the three real main areas or key areas that we looked at, that is presented to you in this budget, is economic development, sustaining job growth, looking at that, as I mentioned a few minutes ago. As well as addressing our staff and increasing it in key areas, and as well as focusing on our infrastructure and our roads, the roads in particular. So those are the three key areas that this budget highlights, along with just the standard operations that we've, that we have. So with that, Mr. Chair, again, I want to thank everybody again for all the hard work, in particular Stewart, for this fine, for his fine job that he did his first, the first year doing this. And with that, I'd like to go ahead and invite him up, Stewart, and he's going to, he's going to be discussing with us the introduction to the budget.
Good morning, Board. First off, I just wanted to thank all the departments, the administrative staff, the auditor's office for all the support that they've given me over this year. There was a lot that went into this during, to get prepared for this day, the admin staff met with all departments in a one-on-one meeting from February through March. Really appreciate all the departments having those meetings with me, I know everyone's very busy. Additionally, we held three special budget meetings throughout, throughout the year, discussing the outlook for the new year, our department requests, and the recommended budget. Additionally, we had various one-on-one meetings with supervisors, and again, I appreciate the supervisors for being readily available for me at the last minute to go over the budget. I did just want to start by kind of highlighting the budget document and where to access it for the public and for our departments. If you go to the San Benito County homepage, it's, the link for the recommended budget is actually over here, under Recent News. It'll also stay on the right side, under Quick Links, as well as it's going to be posted under the Budget and Finance area on the website. Additionally, we have updated Open Gov. The quick link, again, for Open Gov is on the right side, under the Quick Links section of the homepage. We have the nineteen twenty recommended budget and the department requested up. At the end of the audit, we'll also get the eighteen nineteen actuals updated as well for public viewing. So I did want to highlight as well, there were two administrative corrections that we've identified that needed to be made to the budget document. This will be updated and changed by this afternoon on the actual website. The changes are... We forgot to change the chair and vice chair on the Board of Supervisors, so that's a minor administrative change. And then, the county library's links for the CAO's recommended column on the right side here, under the library's budget, those had actually broken and had to be re-corrected. So I just wanted to make sure that those were pointed out for the public. So just the main highlights, basically, the, where we're at today is a one hundred forty-three million dollars in appropriations for all funds. Again, some of the increased expenditures for this coming year were increased by increase to staffing, salaries and benefits, pension costs, just some of our general contracts have also increased. And additionally, there have been some state mandates and changes that we've had to address, and we have a lot of new capital projects that are going to be addressed in this next year. That one hundred forty-three million in appropriations includes five hundred and sixty FTEs across all of our funds. The recommended budget has been, is brought to the board as a balanced budget with some use of reserves over all departments, with a total financing source and use of one hundred and forty-five million. And I did just want to include this as a highlight to the board and the public of where we're actually spending our funding. A big portion of our funding, about twenty-eight percent, is in Health and Human Services. A lot of that is, or all of that is covered by state and federal funding. The county administrative office has about twenty million dollars in appropriations, but that's not just the CAO's office. CAO's office encompasses multiple divisions, it includes even OES. And our Public Works Department is about seventeen percent, but I just wanted to highlight where we're actually spending the funding and what departments that one hundred forty-three million dollars is appropriated towards.
Mr. Chair, Stewart, do you have a pie that only makes in reference to the general fund?
Yeah, I can try to pull that up with the Open Gov, but we can probably try to do that, did you want me to try to go through it now, or I can...
If you don't have it available right now, don't worry about it, but I would like to see it.
Next time?
Before tomorrow's meeting.
Okay, yeah. There were, there are two items that we wanted to bring to the board as adjustments to the recommended budget. One of them is the New Roads Division. The reason why this wasn't put onto the recommended budget was it was an administrative item that we needed to actually create a new division and set it up. The auditor's office helped me with that. The new division is going to be two-two-seven-five, it was created for locally funded projects. Specifically, this is going to be for the potholing projects this year and the John Smith overlay project for this coming year. We wanted to separate out the divisions so that it's not mixed with the federal and state funding, so that it'd be easily recognizable from our other projects going on. So that was an item that we needed to fix. The general fund contribution had already been included in the recommended budget, but I just wanted to make sure that was clear. Additionally, the CAO's office is recommending to also include one additional FTE for an accounting technician to the auditor division. The costs will be covered by decreasing the temp salaries of twenty thousand, and the additional amount will be pulled from the general fund balance to cover the cost. Are there any questions from the board on these specifics?
I just showed Mr. Jaime Dela Cruz the pie chart for the expenses only on the general fund.
Thank you.
Because it's totally different from the general fund plus the vented versus the general fund.
Yeah, yeah. Next time, I'll make sure to include that pie chart.
I got you covered, don't worry.
Were there any questions from the board on these proposed changes? Mr. Chairman, I'd like to bring it back to you for the consent agenda items.
Before we go into the consent agenda, is anything need to be pulled from our Board of Supervisors?
Would you like to make your comment before or after a public comment?
After's fine.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone? See none, is there any public comment? See none, we'll bring it back to the board, and we'll start off with Supervisor Gilio to provide some comments.
Just very, very briefly, number one, and I'll do this formally later, I wanted to thank all of the folks that worked on this budget. It's an outstanding document, very comprehensive, and also showing goals, showing where we're headed, why we're spending the money we want to spend, and what our challenges are, so I really appreciate that, Stewart. I know you've been working, I come here on Saturday night, I'm kind of exaggerating a little bit, but I'm not really, you're here, you're working, you know what I mean? And I sincerely really appreciate all your efforts on this, because it is an easy-to-follow document, and like the chair did up here, he was able to click on a link right away and go right to a pie chart and see that, you know? And that is very helpful, I think, for our communities, thank you. And then one thing I wanted to pull out of the consent item, just pointed out real quick, not, not pull it, by the way, just pointed out, is the grand jury funding for nineteen twenty has been restored to thirty-eight-six-sixteen. And I just wanted to point that out, because we hadn't talked about that yet, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Supervisor Dela Cruz?
Yeah, can we pull out, actually, can we pull out contributions to community-based organizations?
What number is that?
That's number eighteen.
Eighteen, okay.
There's actually one more, I just had it last night. I think it's in regular agenda, but let me see. I think it's in regular gen, it's the economic home budget.
That's, I believe that's in regular.
Okay, perfect, just, just number eighteen.
Let me double check.
Now who can help me out, what page number is that one?
Eighteen is fifteen dash eleven.
Actually, it's not Supervisor Dela Cruz.
First, let's, yeah, economic. So I think the economic and home one is seventy-nine, that's on regular agenda, so we can hear that, we can hear that on regular, and then we can just tackle the one item that you're requesting, Mr. Chair. Number eighteen, or Supervisor Jaime Dela Cruz is requesting.
Supervisor Hernandez, any comments, anything to be pulled? Supervisor Patello?
No, I appreciate that, thank you.
With that being said, we'll pull at Supervisor Dela Cruz's request, number eighteen, the contributions to community-based organizations. Is there a motion on the floor?
So, a move to approve amended consent.
Second.
I see a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, five zero. This takes us to number eighteen, the contribution to community-based organizations. I'll link it for you.
I think it may be eighty-nine.
Eighty-nine.
In my, I have it electronically, I'm not sure how your document reads. It says, community-based organization, CBOs at the top.
I'll grab it for you right now.
Division eleven hundred, eighty-nine. Your work, all right.
Fine.
Okay, oh, Stewart, how much money are we allocating for the nineteen twenty budget?
A hundred and twenty thousand.
And that's based on the, what percentage, six percent of sales tax?
No, we actually put a cap on that, so we only have a certain dollar figure. We actually requested that of your board, I think it was last year, because, yeah, a year ago or two years ago, because of the PB two project, which was going to skew our taxes, so that's the reason why, and it still stays the same.
Just for the record, I sat on that ad hoc committee, and that was part of the decision-making process, what Ray just stated.
Okay, that answers my question, thank you.
Is there a motion on the floor?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Is there a second?
All second.
We've got a first, we've got a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, five zero, eighteen passes. Now we'll move on to the regular agenda. We will start off with the, well, before we start off, I want to embarrass someone real quick. You know, as I always sit on my soapbox up here and talk about customer service, it's the most important part of our county. We recently hired a new RMA director, and we will bring customer service to the planning department, to the RMA department, and the expectation is, for Harry, can you stand up, please? To bring nothing but professionalism and the customer service to the RMA department. Welcome aboard, and we appreciate you coming to the county here, and the expectations are high. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now we will start off with the great Sheriff's Department, providing nothing but great public service to the community here.
So, I was just going to highlight the Corrections Division in a general sense. Due to the, mainly you'll see some increases here of about eight hundred thousand, there's been some increases for medical costs and some additional general contracts for the jail. Additionally, we have recommended to the board to include three new correctional deputies, and this is directly in relation to the jail expansion. The construction for that should be completed by the end of July, and October is a potential opening when they're finishing up some additional communications items within the jail. But we just wanted to make sure that that was highlighted for the board, are there any specific questions from the board?
Yeah, just for, thank you Supervisor Batella, on the motion, it was an incorrect motion, it should have been the temporary do pass.
You are correct, temporary do pass.
Do we need to do that again for the record? Okay, thank you there. First budget I've done, so I jumped the gun, I'm always ahead of everyone, and I just want to pass it, so. Let's make a, let's change that motion, sorry about that, Stewart, let's change that motion to a temporary do pass. Is there a motion on the floor?
So moved, as stated by the chair.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Passes, thank you very much, five zero. That was the temporary do pass, rather than the motion that we said to...
For all the consent.
For all the consent.
Yeah.
I jumped the gun, I wanted to be done quicker, so.
And Mr. Chair, just for the record, that was all of them, including eighteen?
Including eighteen, yes, sir. My apologies, go ahead, Stewart, we know you don't make mistakes.
So I just, I just wanted to ask the board if they had any specific questions on the budget unit for the Corrections Division. The sheriff and the correction captain is, are both here, if there's any specific operational questions.
I have no questions or comment, maybe, we've been working over the last couple of months to restore or provide a little bit of funding for search and rescue for some kind of life safety things, like GPS units when they're out and about, some stuff like that. Do we end up with a solution to that, or should we talk about that later or now, or what are your thoughts on that?
We're going to work on a mid-year solution to that, we're going to work with the sheriff's office to find a solution for that. I know we were looking at potentially seeing if we can get some other funding sources, we had reached out to OES, but we were going to work on that unless you wanted to make the adjustments now.
I'm kind of looking over at the sheriff, and Sheriff, I'm sorry to put you on the spot, are you guys over there, any, any thoughts, are you guys okay with us adding a small amount of money to cover that, those needs, or is that something that you're working on behind the scenes that I should not worry about from up here?
So, I did want to highlight the Corrections Division in a general sense. Due to the, mainly you'll see some increases here of about eight hundred thousand, there's been some increases for medical costs and some additional general contracts for the jail. Additionally, we have recommended to the board to include three new correctional deputies, and this is directly in relation to the jail expansion. The construction for that should be completed by the end of July, and October is a potential opening when they're finishing up some additional communications items within the jail. But we just wanted to make sure that that was highlighted for the board, are there any specific questions from the board?
Yeah, just for, thank you Supervisor Batella, on the motion, it was an incorrect motion, it should have been the temporary do pass.
You are correct, temporary do pass.
Do we need to do that again for the record? Okay, thank you there. First budget I've done, so I jumped the gun, I'm always ahead of everyone, and I just want to pass it, so. Let's make a, let's change that motion, sorry about that, Stewart, let's change that motion to a temporary do pass. Is there a motion on the floor?
So moved, as stated by the chair.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Passes, thank you very much, five zero. That was the temporary do pass, rather than the motion that we said to...
For all the consent.
For all the consent.
Yeah.
I jumped the gun, I wanted to be done quicker, so.
And Mr. Chair, just for the record, that was all of them, including eighteen?
Including eighteen, yes, sir. My apologies, go ahead, Stewart, we know you don't make mistakes.
So I just, I just wanted to ask the board if they had any specific questions on the budget unit for the Corrections Division. The sheriff and the correction captain is, are both here, if there's any specific operational questions.
I have no questions or comment, maybe, we've been working over the last couple of months to restore or provide a little bit of funding for search and rescue for some kind of life safety things, like GPS units when they're out and about, some stuff like that. Do we end up with a solution to that, or should we talk about that later or now, or what are your thoughts on that?
We're going to work on a mid-year solution to that, we're going to work with the sheriff's office to find a solution for that. I know we were looking at potentially seeing if we can get some other funding sources, we had reached out to OES, but we were going to work on that unless you wanted to make the adjustments now.
I'm kind of looking over at the sheriff, and Sheriff, I'm sorry to put you on the spot, are you guys over there, any, any thoughts, are you guys okay with us adding a small amount of money to cover that, those needs, or is that something that you're working on behind the scenes that I should not worry about from up here? Okay, thank you, sir, I appreciate that.
I've got a question. Mr. Chair, in the itemized revenue, it's in the budget, a couple of years ago, we received Homeland Security funds, and we're not getting it anymore. That's what, that's how I read the documents that you provided to us.
Yeah, in the Corrections Division? Yeah, so that, that would have probably been a one-time, maybe for a special project or a piece of equipment purchase.
Okay, and my, I guess my question, you can answer it, my question was, did we hire staff from the Homeland Security grant money?
No.
No, okay, all right, perfect, thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
And actually, in reference to what Supervisor Gilio had mentioned, I attended emergency preparedness, and I, you know, I definitely wanted to refer to the sheriff to, with his input, and I know he wants to give us a month. But just to kind of give a little bit of input from my attendance to that emergency preparedness meeting, it was a multi-agency meeting, we had the county office of ed and other respective agencies, the county, the city, Public Works, you know, OES, so we're all, Red Cross, I think, was there too. Basically, the point is, in the case of an emergency, what we would do to try to handle the first two weeks, which seems to be like the biggest element of response time, you know, because ultimately, that's when you guys are pulling together resources. So long and short, I talked to Supervisor Gilio, and we basically both agreed that it'd be good to have a support, a greater support for emergency, for basically search and rescue, or even like ham radio, because communication was a big element of that conversation. I know that, you know, back in, what was it, two thousand and nine or something, when they cut the fiber, that was a big element of the support system for, for Santa Clara, which was, you know, two-way radio, or what is it, shortwave radio? So, so anyway, so just to kind of give a little feedback on where... So, so anyway, so just to kinda give a little feedback on where urgency is, is to have a little bit of, of a support for, for those folks that help support you. Which, you know, that, that was, in response to protecting our public, that was basically the focus. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, Mr. Chair, on that, uh, search, right now, it's just mostly volunteer, correct, Stuart?
Uh, the whole, um, division is a volunteer program.
And what is the direction that the staff will be making later on?
Uh,
Or recommendation?
To, to potentially add some funding specifically for the program. That would be a general fund cost unless we can find alternative sources. Um, I've reached out to OES to look at, um, some of their, um, their funding, 'cause they also have a CERT team, um, which also provides search and rescue for a public, uh, or, or a more of a urban, um, search and rescue. But, uh, I think all the funding has been allocated for this coming year, so, um, we were talking about potentially looking for some funding in future years, uh, through that, but.
But it's gonna be mostly for services and programs, right?
Yes, train, there, there's training, there's some, uh, there's some equipment that, uh, that has been requested. We just got a list, uh, last week of some of the, uh, some of the requests, um, and they're, they range from training to, uh, PPE equipment for, for medical, um, those kind of things.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any, uh, public comment? Seeing none, bring it back to the board. What's the, uh, wish of the board?
I'll make the, uh, the sa- we're doing, uh, can you provide me the language again, Mr. Chair? This is well of my first budget, uh, hearing at the county. I move that we, uh, temporary do-pass this item.
Number seventy-four, Sheriff?
Sheriff, yes.
Yeah, yeah, and it's on the front page. We should do it on the intro.
Okay.
It's in variable print.
Got it, thank you.
I just can't read.
I, um, I move that we temporary do-pass budget unit for, uh, Sheriff as presented to the board today.
Is there a second?
Second, Mr.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Five, zero. Temporary do-pass. Thank you. Second one, we'll, uh, bring up the county library, number seventy-five, seventy-six, seventy-seven.
So, uh, the revenues expenditures that you see here, uh, the total general fund cost, that is a, uh, combination of the, uh, three divisions, the county libraries, main operating division, the literacy programs, and the bookmobile. We are recommending no changes to, to staffing at this time. And the key changes that, um, were included in the budget is a one hundred thousand dollar request for new furniture and a one hundred fifty thousand dollar request, um, for consultant costs related to a library expansion and/or bond financing. This would include surveys, um, and the consultant work to get, um, to that point, to look at a potential, uh, financing for this project. But if there are any additional questions on, um, those items, or any, uh, other items from the board, um, I believe our librarian is here as well to answer any specific questions on this item.
Supervisor Batello?
Yeah, I, uh, so, the one hundred and fifty thousand dollar, uh, request for the consultant is in this budget.
Correct.
And are we at the point where we're ready to talk about library expansion and spend a hundred and fifty thousand? Is, is this something that, you know, we just came off of a, of a study that we spent quite a bit of money on, that showed space needs, and, you know, it seems like we're going back and redoing that work, and we really don't have any funding mechanism to expand the library, anyway. I think, I thi- uh, especially with this year's budget, that, as you stated in your opening remarks, we're tight. This is an, another position, or something that could go to, uh, another area. Uh, it's not, a hundred and fifty thousand, it's a hundred and fifty thousand. Maybe the librarian, I, I don't know if Nora is here yet, if she could clarify this, why this is so important to have right now. It's a lot of money.
Good morning, board members and members of the public and those that are at home. The time has come, board members, for a facility that can meet the needs of our community, both from a service standpoint and from a safety standpoint as well. I'd like just sixty seconds to just bring you, give you a little, uh, background. Our library was built in nineteen sixty, when there were sixteen thousand people in this la- in this community. The library was very important to this community, and it's, has manifested itself even before nineteen sixty, in that our county was one of the first counties that had up to thirty-two reading rooms, because of the value that this community placed on literacy and information, and the love of reading. So we've come now to nine, twenty nineteen, where our community now is approaching sixty thousand. Libraries have evolved since then in providing the services that are necessary for a community, not only from hard copy, but to technology, and providing learning services for individuals as a resource center, also as a referral center, also as a community that provides services that cuts the travel and distance for individuals, because we have those spaces that are available. Knowing a little bit of the past, and where we are going, our library is among one of the most, is among one of the most visited agencies in San Benito County, because it responds to, to a number of needs in a multiple of languages. Our programming aspect, aspect becomes a problem, because we, our, our facility can only house forty-nine individuals when you have a program. And also, the overcrowding when, after school, wherein children come in, adults come in, and want to be able to have a place to sit, to do either their homework, or getting together, uh, with a community member to, um, because it is a hub. It's a business hub. It's an information hub. It's a trusting place for lots of members of the community to be able to, to come to. When I talk about safety issues, overcrowding is, is beginning to be a huge problem for us, because of the escalation in population, also because of the new, that recent influx that we all know will continue to happen, because of the affordability and the loveliness of our, of our community. So, I've really felt, as your county librarian, that this needed to be brought to the forefront, to be looked at, because the time has come. In the past, you know, we've done the very best we can within the confines of what you have provided for us. In order for us to be successful, we need to dive into this, have clarity about what it is that we need, and, uh, Supervisor Batello, it is true that we've had, we've looked into this. And it doesn't take a lot for an individual to understand that if you were built in nineteen sixty, when you had sixteen thousand, and now you've got sixty thousand and growing, the existing facility does not meet the needs and is inadequate to meet the needs of the community. In hiring a consultant, not only for our board members, but for the public, there will be a clear understanding of number one. Do they want to expand that facility? Are they willing to support by voting for a, um, for an expanded, uh, library commu- library, uh, for their community? Uh, will they, um, we will be able to have access to an actual drawing of what that library will look like in the delivery of these services, uh, that we need, that we, that it's just a situation where seating is a problem, a, we're overcrowded, uh, situation. So, when you hire a consultant, it just provide, it, and I shouldn't say just, it provides a guarantee that you will be knowing where you'll be, wh- in which direction the community wants to go. The other thing,
If I could get clarification that, uh, Nora, i- is that this consultant is basically going to survey the public to see the willingness for us to pay another property assessment tax, uh, to build a new library facility, in which this consultant would design, uh, for the, the current and future needs of our community?
Absolutely.
Okay.
And it will do it through, through polling and, uh, community engagement, gathering of all that information, what are the needs, and then putting it to paper. Thank you.
Okay, that's, that's what I, uh, Mr. Chairman, I, I kinda have concerns, um, about this. I, I, I'm concerned that it is a lot of money, and this is, you know, let's put it out w- way it is, is that we're, we're going to survey the public to see if they're willing to pay another tax, uh, on their property. And, uh, for, for the library, and it's a campaign, political effort. It, it's, I have a hard time, you know, allocating this funding on, in this particular budget, at this particular time, uh, maybe at some point when we're getting more cannabis money in, more business, uh, revenues and things like that. I think, uh, if, I don't disagree with the fact that we do need a new library. We have outlived our current facility. We have to find a way to, um, move forward. But I, I don't know, um, I would like to see our partnerships be firmed up. I'd like to see re- revenue coming from City of Hollister, who really is the main benefactor factor of this library. I'd like to see some partnerships with our school districts and our, uh, college district, uh, in, in this effort. Right now, it, it appears to me that we're footing the whole bill. And at the end of the day, we're at the hundred and fifty thousand if it comes back negatively, and I, I, I don't know if I could support that at this time. Thank you.
May I?
Well, sure.
Say.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, it has been my experience that, you know, I placed a hundred and fifty thousand dollars there, and yes, it is significant. My research has showed that it could, it may not cost as much, it may cost less, but what I did not want to do is to try to go after something and then stop, because we didn't have, you know, enough money.
I'm willing to look at the hundred and fifty thousand dollars in being, um, the Stuart, being the leadership agency in this, uh, group, and then, at a later date, even though we will fund the, the, um, campaign, we would ask the city, we would ask the, um, other agencies, being the Gablin and the school district, if they would be willing to participate in that, uh, that cost. But, uh, I have no problem showing this community that a library is needed, and I will put, uh, the money where my mouth is.
Mr. Chair? Uh, just quick, quickly, so the, uh, I, I think we need to be careful here, because we're, we're not going to be campaigning for this, by the way. We'll be set, it'd be some, very similar to Measure G, right? We'll be going out with, like, with COG, they went out and they did the studies, got the, uh, financials, and then at, at, at certain point, the county steps back, and we are gonna be no part of any, um, political campaign. That's not what we do, and that's not what we should be doing, in, in my mind. So, um, is that correct, Barbara? Okay, I just wanna make sure I'm on the right page, and th- this is more for a feasibility study. Does it, does it make sense? Is this something that the community wants? I can tell you that I've personally gone to a lot of meetings, and I, I, I get a sense that there, there is a desire and a, a need to expand our library. Now, whether or not they're gonna be willing to pay for it with a, a property tax, I think that's something important for us to understand before we put a whole lot more money to go forward. I support this, and I, I think that, um, uh, I, I'd like to see that number come down, frankly, because I, I think that that is gonna be high, based on what I've seen in the past on feasibility studies. So, I would recommend that it's a not-to-exceed number, not a, here's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, get right up to one forty-nine-nine with a consultant, because I don't want somebody to see that and think they can come and bid that, and that's what we're gonna pay. Because I think you'll do, uh, better than you think on that, on the, on the price on that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair. So I, I appreciate you, Nora, bringing all that information, and definitely, I, I think that, you know, the need is there. You know, I'm born and raised here, so I, I understand the library is, has a need, but I see all the departments, and I see there's a lot of deep, all across the county with a different, so it's, it's, it's hard, 'cause we're not definitely trying to pick and choose and say one is, um, you know, uh, better than the other, or more, you know, but there's certain elements that have to, have to happen, uh, as far as the support for, you know, emergency services and, 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 you know, the different departments and stuff. But my other point, too, is the, the reality is, you know, and I've talked to folks, I don't think a bond would be really popular. I think we're really bonded out, you know, we're, we're, you know, not too long ago, I, I, I was, I saw a lot of people really complaining about the fact that they have a lot of bonds on their property tax bill. So it's, people are getting stretched, and we're at a point in time where we've grown, and we, we, outside of our capacity to even manage that growth. So, all things considered, I just, I don't think it's the time for, for a bond, you know. I think, you know, we have a really good credit rating, and, and, uh, I think we need to protect it. And then, you know, uh, besides that, I, I, I think we really need to figure out how we can have partnerships to support the libraries, 'cause I do believe they need support. But taking it on the taxpayers, I don't think is a way to do it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, I would like, I provide some rationale here, very quickly.
Sure.
Um, in the eighties, this library, through a grassroots community movement, did actually two, going to the voters. They both failed within a two to three percentage, which was very small. Library usage then was not what it is today. And more members of the community are taking great advantage of lots of, uh, services that we provide for them through creativity and innovation, and already partnership that exists. So I just wanted to, to add that.
Supervisor Dela Cruz?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I've gone to the library many times, as, as, as a kid, and even taken my grandkids there, too. Uh, it's in the middle of my district. I think it's important to recognize the facilities that we have that can benefit, especially our kids, especially in light of that, we're trying to have a higher education concept here in San Benito County. What I would like to really see, uh, I would like to see the other members of the community step up. I mean, I'm talking about the Community Foundation, the City Hollister, private groups of individuals, e- even Gavlon College come, come up to the plate and say, you know what? We believe in this idea. We wanna, we wanna contribute to this, and, and we wanna share what the counties, um, were willing to put to the table. I would like to see that first, before I make a decision on today, uh, and we can, you know, always table this down the road and, and invite the other, uh, stakeholders of the community, uh, until, you know, everyone buys into it. It, it just, it can't, it can't succeed without other stakeholders buying into the concept, because I think it's important, our library, it's very important in our community. I know that we, every year, we allocate over a million dollars for staff and services, and, and, and there's no lack of us showing support for the library. And so if the, that's the direction that the, the San Benito County, that want, library wants to do, they gotta bring other players to the table, too. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
May I respond to, to this?
Yes, ma'am.
There's, um, certainly areas that are of concern when you, uh, work in partnership, or you kind of mix what you're trying to accomplish and what already has been stated, like, uh, with the bond measure that happened for Gavlon College. There's no indication of a new library. Does that mean that we haven't worked with them? No, we do work with them, because many years ago, I started a partnership for ESL. But already, that room has, it's, they need more space, uh, as well. Also, the fact that libraries already get funding, i.e. from the state library, and I have that flexibility to be able to apply for grants, uh, as well. And believe you me, I have exhausted and done many, many and mu- And believe you me, I have exhausted and done many, many and much of that. Some at the amount of fifty thousand, some at the amount of ten, some at the amount of five because we do bring in revenue. So there's areas that when we're talking about mixing and we're talking about partnership, what is the potential of losing funding that we already have? So this is why to me, it was really important to take a look at this so that we'll be, well, I am sure, I'd like for you to be sure, I'd like the public to be sure and know exactly which way they are going. Is it a bit costly? At a hundred and fifty thousand, I would agree with you that it is costly. But I did that as a safety precaution measure so that once we get started, we can continue to go so that we will have success. And this doesn't mean just success for, it means success for the entire community because the needs are broad and wide and deep and they have effect on our children and in the future to come.
Mr. Chair, one more question. Stuart, all things considered, you know, from the sentiment, it sounds like the board, if we do bring this back, is there going to be a measurement on that study to figure out what the increase? Because as if it, you know, we get a new library, it's bigger. I'm assuming there's going to be more staff and the cost associated with staff, you know. So that's another of my concerns, but yeah, how do we?
That was definitely one of the concerns that I had when Nora was bringing this up. But I would, you know, Nora's going to work on that specifically, so maybe she could answer the specific question on what would be included in that study.
Yeah.
In nineteen, excuse me, in two oh six, when I was hired for this position, you had nine full staff members plus part-time staff. And that was a check-in, check-out library. It is no longer a check-in, check-out library and it has less staff. And the rationale behind that is because my staff is a cross-functional staff. They know about each other's job duties and responsibilities and how to carry them out. I envision that this will continue to happen in a greater and larger facility. Remember, it's not always quantity, but quality of staff that produces successful outcomes. So that's why I continue to be confident. Also, there is the community social capital that certainly is a help to us as well. Loves the library and sees the value of providing quality library services to its community. So that does not scare me or makes me to shy away. We must be willing to face the future, but also understand that there are managerial type functions that you must do in order to be able to provide services within the confines that are set out for you. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, got a quick question. Nora, Supervisor Hernandez and myself met with you and friends of the library and I heard a twenty thousand dollars project that you were going to come to the county asking for twenty thousand dollars to do a study. What happened to that idea?
Twenty thousand?
Yep, twenty thousand.
I'm sorry.
Am I correct Supervisor Hernandez, you were there?
I was, I remember it being a smaller amount, I can't remember exactly the amount.
That you were going to ask, that the idea was for you to ask the city for ten and for the county for ten?
Well, that's right, that is right.
I believe that that idea, I don't believe that, I don't recall making that statement, but I do recall many a times that I've gone to the city to ask them for additional contributions, like the annual fifteen thousand contribution. I constantly ask them for augmentation. The response in general from our, from the City of Hollister, and you know, I'm not the City of Hollister and they know what they have to contend with. When I ask, their response is, you know, we don't have any money, we don't have the money. So I wish I could remember, you know, that statement.
Yeah, I-
I believe maybe it could have been that there was conversation or dialogue that was going on about maybe contributing toward the, toward this consultant. And you must remember too, we've done some more additional research and evaluating and taking a look at a total picture. And I wish I could be more, you know, clearer about this Supervisor Adela Cruz, but that was, you know, that was quite some time ago.
So it was, just to clear things, it was March twenty-ninth and it was a twenty thousand dollar study you mentioned and it was surrounding a strategic plan. So it's from my notes.
All right, maybe Tammy was there. So Tammy, can you help us?
The, good morning. I'm Tammy Aviles with the Coalition for a New Community Library and Resource Center. And at that meeting, the twenty thousand was brought up as a guesstimate on a survey and just that portion of it. So, and that was at the time was, you know, tossing numbers about and it was just kind of brainstorming. Since then, you know, we have been pursuing getting actual quotes and scope of work and price estimates.
Thank you.
It's a worthwhile, Mr. Chair, if I still have the floor. It's a worthwhile concept and it's a very noble position that you're asking the board to fund. There's just a lot of questions such as staffing levels, turnaround time, just even questions I don't even know of right now that will pop up later on. And plus, I was actually talking to CEO Ray Espinoza the other night that the board should consider also doing a sales tax for public safety down the road. And so we definitely do not want to max out the voters in our community. And at the same time, this is important because our future, our generation, my grandkids, everyone else's grandkids and kids will benefit from it, no doubt about it. And we need to take care of their future needs under education. And so I do support the concept. I just feel that we need to take little baby steps. I know it's an ambitious idea to come to the board and say, we want a hundred, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, knowing that there were earlier discussions of a twenty thousand dollars to do a study. Supervisor Hernandez, he wrote the notes and I remember very clearly the discussions we had. I would recommend that either this board, you know, can somehow work with Nora, right? And try to develop a game plan that addresses all the issues. I just can't give you a check for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars today and say, here, go, go, and then come back. If you're serious about doing the sales tax or a bond for a new library, it has to be taken under the guides of our CEO, Ray Espinoza. It's just, it's a lot of money. It's almost a soldier, deputy on the streets, which we need to protect the public. It's maybe two full-time positions that we could hire, you know, for other departments too. And not what to withstand your department needs because we have shown consistently, we have a record that we continue to support you when it comes to the library. And I'll be proud of it and I'll say it again, even when it comes to today's budget, I will support your budget. You are about to enter into a new venture. And we want to make sure that Ray Espinoza will be there to help out. But to give you a hundred and fifty thousand dollars today is just, I just can't pull the trigger on it right now. You gotta help me to help you out.
I'm always willing to be in a position to be helpful and to be willing. I also would like to add, as we were talking earlier about in case of an emergency, of a disaster, do you know one of the first places that when an emergency or disaster takes place other than hospitals to be able to house individuals?
Library.
Absolutely. It is a significant multipurpose, the schools as well. But there's a significant, you know, your community rooms to be able to help. And, you know, we do have one of the strongest internet and fastest great broadband. And I had that brought in, not because money that was given to by our county, but because of a grant that we went after from the state library to be able to have that. So there's, there are additional benefits, you know, to having the size of increased for our library. It is important, I'm glad to see that there's thought about this, that we have an understanding of the role that it plays in the development of our community and our children, our youth and our seniors as well because they are also, all of us continue to contribute. Would I like it to go forward, Board members, yes, I would. But the public has placed you in a place of leadership. And so I accept that leadership and that direction, but fully understand that I've come to you because I see that the time has come and because of safety factors as well.
Thank you, we will work together, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any public comment?
Good morning, I'm Mary Schneider. I'm a member of the Friends of the Library. It's an interesting discussion and I know there are things that are going on at the state level which may make this either more or less relevant as a discussion item, among them A B number one, which is about lowering the limit of the supermajority from sixty-six and two-thirds percent down to fifty-five percent. So we don't know where that will go in the future, but it will certainly affect bond feasibility financing. I was very struck by the statement that we found difficulty in thinking about or measuring or dealing with the future growth of the population in our county. And what Mrs. Conti is requesting is a way to help lead us through thinking about things that will no doubt affect us in the future. I know that the library is a source of emergency shelter in heat emergencies. I don't expect there to be less in the future. And also in the cold emergencies, which is not so much of a big problem in our area. But a warming and cooling thing is kind of like the new norm for shelter emergency stuff for people with small children, for example. Since libraries now open seven days a week, that certainly makes it more versatile. So these are things that I thought about. Another one was the reference to grassroots organizations. I know that a preliminary study of something is obviously, we're looking at something else down the road. And I go back and think about, well, what did we do as a community when we wanted to reinstate the bookmobile? You know, we did indeed have a partnership with Community Foundation through grants that I wrote. We have had partnerships also more recently with United Way and in the past somewhat with Monterey Peninsula Community Foundation. So I kind of don't think we are too bad on our grassroots liaisons. Our event, our tee that we hold is another way of doing fundraising. We do it through direct mail. We do direct mail and in other ways too for soliciting funds. So we do have a fairly good grassroots outreach and I have like two hundred and eighty-five names on my mailing list, not to mention their email addresses. I do try to get, what would you call it, communication with the state when we're talking about A B number one. So grassroots and future planning, I think that we are doing our best. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Hi, again. I just wanted to address some of the comments. I agree with Supervisor Gilio on a not to exceed. As the coalition, we are, we would be, I guess you could look at it as the Community Oversight Committee. I mean, we're pursuing and trying to be cost-effective and efficient in what we're doing. And Supervisor Patello, in regards to the needs assessment, we have looked at that document. We are taking, you know, things from that and notes from that in terms of how to move forward, you know, based on their suggestions, incorporating that into our plan. Nora has already implemented a lot of the services side of the needs assessment report. So we're not throwing it away. We are taking it, but we are in need of something more updated in terms of, you know, what the community would like and, you know, what their limits would be in terms of funding it. Also to keep in mind that whatever we do now, obviously won't get, you know, a building won't be built for a few years, you know, for approval, planning and all that. But we do need to act now to take care of our growing and future needs. And in terms of getting the city and the schools to step up and participate, that's something the coalition is also working on. And we're meeting and we are trying our best to, you know, get commitments from the city and the school districts. You know, everyone we talk to supports the need for a new library, an expanded library. So we just, you know, appreciate your continued support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any additional public comment? CNN, we'll bring it back to the board.
Yeah, you know, I appreciate the comments and, you know, I don't think you're getting any arguments about the need, but the way I look at it, we have a lot of needs throughout the whole county right now and our revenues haven't quite, you know, I see a bright future, but they haven't, we haven't realized it yet. And to spend another hundred and fifty thousand on a consultant with our roads and the condition that they're in, and I don't view the library as our emergency shelter. I don't think we're going to expand a library with that in mind. We're expanding the library as an educational tool. And so, you know, I think it's just a little bit premature to do a hundred and fifty thousand for a consultant at this time until we develop the partnerships, I mean, real partners, people that will foot some money. You know, if we're having a hard time with Hollister with the fifteen thousand, year in, year out, I don't think they realize the importance of the library. And I agree with Supervisor Dela Cruz that we have to work on that. And really, the only way we're going to accomplish a new library anyway is in partnership with the other agencies. Otherwise, it's not to be shouldered by the county by itself. And so I'm not going to support the hundred and fifty thousand at this time. If something changed through in nineteen twenty budget, I would certainly look at contingencies, funds to hire something that's a little bit more within means. But that's where I'm at right now. I think a hundred thousand dollars for furniture is, you know, even on the high side of a request. But I could appreciate support and will support that. But that's where I'm at right now, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Mr. Chair, maybe I kind of watching all my peers' comments up here and it seems like that this is not going to pass today. So perhaps we could provide some direction or bring it back later if it's not agendized appropriately for that to take a look at it mid-year or maybe three quarters of the way through the year and see where we're at then. I don't know if that's, we can get a head nod on that and if, or if it's not appropriate to do that now, we can do that at a later date. Those are my thoughts, Mr. Chair.
What's the wish of the board?
Mr. Chair, I've got a second part question to the hundred thousand requested for new furniture. Stuart, can you tell me what that request is for? Nora?
It has always been a challenge to work toward optimization of the existing space. And we have done a number of activities to try to maximize that space. As you may remember, in that library, there were tables that only ten individuals would sit and it was not the best situation for the use of- And it was not the best situation for the use of how libraries are being used today. So, we were able to, through other cities giving us furniture. So, that helped to a certain degree. But we have other things that we need to have. For example, our desk, our service desk, now that we have self-checks, is too big. It takes up too much of a footprint, too much of the public space footprint that we could use for more, maybe additional seating. Also, we're the only library, we're not a library that has four or five other libraries. We are one main library. That means that you need to have the ranges through the obtaining additional footage in the library so that you can develop depth and breadth of collection. Yes, there are sources available on the internet. But individuals still, as part of their requirement for whatever report, thesis that they're going to be turning in, need to have hard copy as well. Our children need to have hard copy as well. And they also have to have the reading levels that are important. It does me no good to have a fourth-grade experiment, book on experiments for a second grader. So, developing depth and breadth of collection is very important when you are a main library. So, we're looking at ranges. We're looking at the circulation desk. We're looking at areas where we can dedicate. For example, our three-D printers, where the public can come in and use our three-D printers and experience that type of activity in the creation of an item that they would like to create. So, these are the type of, this is why I thought, well, if we get a new facility, at least for now, we'll have, we'll be optimizing what we have through this furniture and in preparation for the future. So, I saw it as a bridge toward where we want to go. So, that's what purchases would be for.
Thank you, Nora.
Mr. Chair. With the wish of the board?
I'll make a, I'll take a crack at it for a temporary due pass on the county's library's budget with a reduction of the hundred-and-fifty thousand dollar request for the consultant.
We have a second?
I have a question, Mr. Chair. Nora, with the three-D printers, how do you, I mean, I know that it might sound like an off-the-wall question, but I mean, three-D printers can be used for nefarious things, too. So, I'm just trying to understand, is there some kind of a process where you would make sure that people aren't using those things for wrong means?
There would be scheduled appointments, and a knowledgeable staff member would be there. Also, we would, we use the three-D printers with staff being present, as we're demonstrating. You know, the three-D printers and the children being able to, you know, to have whatever article was created.
Okay. Thank you, Nora.
There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
Can I add just one comment?
Can interrupt the motion? Well, I want to take off the motion real quick.
I'll take the, uh...
Go ahead and leave it on. It's fine. I was just going to add that one of the things, if, you know, so the board will understand and kind of hear is, I think it's important that we do work with the cities or local jurisdictions, but also, too, our legislatures. There was, I think, I believe in two thousand or so, where there was a library, some library funding available, it was a ninety-ten split. And maybe we can request our local legislatures, Assemblyman Rivas and Senator Caballero to possibly carry something over the next year. And, you know, where it's not such a burden on our local community from a tax-based perspective and try to be able to subsidize it with the funds we do have. So, that's just a suggestion and probably something that I would recommend that staff would work on with their local legislatures over this next year to get something like this moving forward.
Yeah. And to elaborate on my motion is, you know, not to, you know, I'm not against researching, you know, some sort of design and get this done in the community. It's just that I think we need more discussion on this item before we hire a consultant for a hundred-and-fifty thousand. I think it's a topic for a future retreat and also a little bit more intergovernmental discussion, some real, you know, partnerships being developed before we jump off and spend this money. We don't have the money to spend for another consultant, another study like we had two or three years ago with that library consultant study. And I just think we need to give this a little bit more thought. That's why I'm making that motion.
You want to restate your motion?
I'll restate the motion that we have, for a temporary due pass of the county library budget as presented by staff with the exclusion of the hundred-and-fifty thousand dollar request for the consultant.
Is there a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
No. Three, two, four. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Go to planning?
I'd like to be here for this item.
I guess. We're going to take the five-minute break.
The location. Because they want to have, they want to have a quiet place, I guess.
Ray is back. We will continue our budget hearings. Okay, we'll start with planning, number sixty-five.
So, for clarification for the board, this will cover items seventy-eight, seventy-nine, and eighty. So, for RMA, out at, for our building and planning divisions, there was two FTE changes for the coming year. That was to add a code enforcement officer and also to add an assistant director of building and planning to oversee that area of RMA. There is a lot of need right now for the code enforcement, and there's a big gap in actually having that work completed. That's the reason for adding it into this budget. Ongoing, the chief building official position is still being contracted out by Fourleaf. We just wanted to highlight that to make sure that the board was aware that that was still ongoing. Additionally, I'm going to bring up the budgets for the housing and economic development. So, the housing and economic development division under our RMA department, which is under the building and planning side, includes half of the cost of the housing coordinator position, which is shared between both the city and the county. Additionally, the board had requested and discussed a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars for economic development. One hundred thousand, tentatively to go to the Economic Development Corporation for the EDC coordinator or director-type position. Additionally, the other fifty thousand was supposed to be allocated by the board to continue the funding for the other economic organizations that we have been providing funding for, Chamber of Commerce and some of the others. But I just wanted to make sure that that was highlighted for the board. And the land development projects division is actually a newer budgeted division. This includes all of the land development projects that the planning department is working on to specifically identify those out from the other divisions and the work that's being worked on in the building and planning department. That's why you see that there was not an adopted budget in fiscal year eighteen-nineteen, even though we have had some activity in this unit. I just wanted to make sure that that was aware, that this is a newer unit that wasn't, that we're not lumping in anymore with the rest of the building and planning department so that it's specifically identified outside of that. But other than that, I think some folks from RMA are here to answer any specific operational questions. But I'd like to bring it back to you.
Yeah, I'd like to start off by saying the additional code enforcement officer is needed. Anyone out there understands that we need additional manning in that capacity. The second part is, once Mr. Harry is, has his feet wet, I want to make sure that we all understand that Fourleaf has helped us out of the issues we've had in the past. We have a very seasoned and very intelligent individual running the RMA department. And I want to be clear that we are able to bring in our own staff and steer away from the contracted staff. So, those are my two requests, sir. Anyone, is there?
So, thank you, Stuart. Yeah, I have a question, and actually, it's more of a concern. I'm kind of having second thoughts with the whole economic development, especially since it's tied to housing. You know, I know you just kind of peeled away that it's, you know, under the RMA. But, you know, we had a sit-down, or I had a sit-down with Mr. Johnston from, you know, I think he's the guy trying to help facilitate this with one of his partners. And long and short, I stressed to him, I don't want to hear that we're talking about economic development under the guise of supporting more housing, because I know that that's not a public sentiment. And he basically guaranteed me that wasn't the case, but... And, and he, he basically guaranteed me that wasn't the case, but it just, unless I don't have the clarity, maybe, I'm not hearing that. So, so yeah, so if I'm thinking economic development, it's literally producing jobs, it's, it's a lot of other things outside of houses. 'Cause houses right now are negative investments, as far as I'm concerned for our community.
The housing and economic development division in no way needs to tie each other together. This has just been a historical division that has been in the county. We can always pull it out and make another division specifically separating the two. That's no, that's fairly easy and we, and we can set that up. Either now I can make that change for the adopted budget, or we can make that change going on to the next year. But it's not to relate the two funding and the two, two potential contracts to each other. It's just that that's historically how it's been budgeted and that's the division that we, that I had at the time.
Yeah, I appreciate that, and I, I, I knew that, so I'm not, I'm not beating you up for it. It's just, I just have reservations outside of the, the framing of the way it's established, of how this thing is gonna roll out, 'cause I really don't have any good measurements. And, I mean, I know Mr. Johnson mentioned, you know, establishing a, some kind of a, a game plan for, for, you know, job attraction and promotion and all these, so there's good stuff he talks about, but it's all kinda high level. There's no real tangibles that I'm seeing, so I can't support just, you know, a ten thousand foot view without really knowing if, if we can put measurements in there that are gonna say, yes, we're gonna get results from you. And I know we talked about that, that's why there was a temporary support, and we were gonna talk about the details in the budget process. And I haven't gotten those details, so I don't, I, I just can't support.
Mr. Chair, if I may.
So, just as, as a reminder, so the board did hear this item, the board did move forward with this, actually allocating a hundred thousand dollars for this. But we would come back during, during, once we go through, once you have allocated, this is a kind of a procedural thing. Once the board allocated the actual funding, we would have to go back with them and, and build a contract that addresses each one of your needs, or the needs that your board gave us direction on, which was, one of them was having data, was actually having some accountability, was also too addressing, you know, where to go, you know, administratively, how to better process individuals' needs within our community. Those are some of the things that we would like to see as well within this contract. And I think Supervisor Hernandez has highlighted, you know, the concern of, of having some data behind this and what they're actually gonna do. I know that you had talked about having the, all the funds go to them, and then they go ahead and disperse those funds for economic development. That would be Supervisor Patello had mentioned that before, so there's different, there's different requests. We're not there yet, we still have to go through that process. We need to first have the board approve the allocation of the fundings, and then we would go through the contract piece of it. And then your board can then either chime in or give more direction, or approve or deny the contract. That's, that's up to your board at that point.
Mr. Supervisor Dela Cruz.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, very do appreciate, um, two-part question. First, Ray, are they gonna come on July first to start, start the clock, or, or it's a day when we enter, enter contract?
When we bring the contract back to you, that's when we're gonna, that's when we, that's when they, you know. It's a day when we start the contract.
At, at as early as we're looking at, at, at the third week in July, right?
I, I can't answer that, it's, it's, that's out of their operations. I know that they need to still go through the process as well. They need to have some guarantees from the jur, their jurisdictions to move forward with actually bringing staff on board. So without this, without the allocation of fund, they can't even start the process, that's, that's ultimately.
It's gonna take a while, what you're telling me.
That's gonna take a little bit of time for them, it's a process, just with, just like with us, when we hire folks, it, it takes time.
And then at that time, the board will have, will have the ability to ask questions and all of that good stuff.
That's right, yeah.
Not related to the economic, but more to the housing. I'm looking at the, all the revenues that we're expected to make for nineteen, twenty. How much of, of, of inclusionary housing are we slated, slated to make for the year?
And are you referring to the assessed values, is that what you're talking about, the, no? Okay, okay, just for clarity on that.
Supervisor Dela Cruz. In tomorrow's agenda, we have inclusionary housing also, an increase. And, you know, that's what we're voting on also tomorrow, so that it, when you're looking at what you're seeing right now, you're basing it on a certain amount, and then tomorrow it may increase if the vote is there.
What, what assumptions do you use for that account?
Zero, because in the past, we have not collected much or any, if at all. That's, it's right here on the schedule two, if you go down to, it's fund two eight eight. Having a hard time highlighting it, but.
Two eight eight.
Two eight eight, um, we have not budgeted any expenditures or revenue expected for the inclusionary, because it's either so small, or we haven't been collecting on it. And I do know it will be brought back to the board for some changes to how that is.
Supervisor Patello.
Okay, thank you, I, I think it's a, a very good suggestion that Supervisor Hernandez has. I'm sorry, a very good suggestion that Supervisor Hernandez has in separating the housing portion and the economic development. I'm, I'm very supportive of that. I think now that we're spending some money and, and I think we're getting additional revenue, housing is one program where we have a housing coordinator with the city of Hollister and, and programs. And, and economic development, we're funding, you know, a, a EDC to a great extent to facilitate hopefully economic development in our county, whether it's in the nodes or in the, that business area for the autonomous vehicles. And I, I think it would serve that same purpose with the city of Hollister and partnership as well. We need that facilitator and that, that's another area of measurement of success. And it would be easier to oversee, so I, I, I support that, whether it's in this budget or the next budget. But I, I feel that we, we have to be committed to, to this. I, I think this is a reasonable budget and I'm very supportive of it, thank you.
Supervisor Gilio.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I agree with Supervisor Hernandez, I don't see any harm of separating it out, but I, I want to be clear that this has nothing to do with housing. Some people have, in the media I saw, had kinda conflated the two or interchanged the two. Economic development is clear, economic development. We're gonna have an EDC director that is gonna go out and recruit new business to come to our area, help local businesses expand. Just last week, I sat at this table with a very large business that's looking to come here. And right now, our, our efforts are scattered, and we need to hone that effort, have a central point of contact in our community with liaisons at the city, at the county, at San Juan Batista to, to get this done. I mean, that this opportunity that I, I spoke with, it's gotta be confidential for now because of trade secrets and things like that. But there, there, there is a very heavy economic interest in our community, in our county right now. And we, as a board, I believe, and I will support this a hundred percent, is we need to show folks that we are open for business and we are welcoming new businesses here, because a lot of folks are really concerned about our traffic and our roads. Well, guess what, I think a huge way that we can take the pressure off our roads is bring jobs here, frankly. We need to bring jobs here, get people off our roads and back in our communities. And this is a way to do it, this is a way that we can potentially in the future, bring more revenue and expand our library, and bring more revenue and expand our public safety, bring more revenue and do all the things that we want to do. But unless we're willing to invest in economic development and take that step, then I, I think we're gonna miss the boat, and I think we need to do it as soon as possible, because as you all know, the economy goes in cycles, the economy's very cyclical. Right now, we're at a, a peak in the economy, and, and who knows what the future holds, I'm not an economist, but, so, those are my comments, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Any public comment? Seeing none, bring it back to the board, any further questions from the board?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I, and I appreciate Supervisor Gilio's, Gilio's comments on, on the economic perspective.
I appreciate Supervisor Gilio's position about the economic development and what we need to do to reinvest back in our community in terms of economic, to stimulate economic. When we had this and when we were funding this, every time we asked for reports, they always tell us that, you know, it's gotta be confidential, we're trying to get the information right, and at the end of the day, nothing matures. And I just somehow, we gotta create a better working relationship between the board and, and the economic development group. I don't buy that anymore, and I apologize if I insult anyone, I just don't buy that fact that it's confidential, I can't release that name. Just gotta give me something else besides that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Supervisor Dela Cruz, I'll invite you to every meeting that I have with a business that comes here, how's that? And then you can hear it, and then you.
That's a good cover, right?
Mr. Chair. So, and I, I agree with Supervisor Dela Cruz and, and Gilio, it's a need, I know it's a need. The biggest ask that I have is that we have some, something tangible, 'cause the hardest part about this kind of a level of conversation is it's usually very relative or very general to the extent where it's hard to measure, there's no way to really say, did we get the results that we wanted? So if we can get some kind of strong measurements, it gives us an ability to, to say this isn't working and change gears. I just, I'd hate to waste taxpayers' money on something where, you know, we're still struggling to see those. And it's, it's back to what our CAO had mentioned, so what those measurements can be, I don't know if council and, our CAO can come up with some kind of a game plan, maybe we have a strategic planning session specifically around EDC, but something where it's, it's very anchored to reality where it forces results and not, not just, you know, it's gonna take a five-year plan. You know, a five-year plan already tells me it's a long time, and who knows when we're gonna get that benefit outside of a downturn or, or any kind of economic cycle. So, you know, when I, when I sat down with them, they mentioned a business attraction plan, a business expansion plan, shared business space, supporting the chamber with EDC, which is tourism. I mean, all that sounds to me is we're spending money, but what exactly are we doing? What is that plan? I don't know, I, I wanna have some hardened information that gives me a lot more reason to support it. And, and I wanna be able to have opportunities to be able to back out if, if after a year, they're not, they're not moving. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
What's the, what's the board?
Speaker, a microphone, prepared to make a motion that we, I'm sorry, I'm looking for the language in. Approve a temporary due pass for this item. And within that temporary due pass, we separate and create a new line item, new line item under planning. One will be housing, and then another line item would be economic development, it'd be separate.
Second, Mr. Chair.
On favor? Aye, aye, five zero.
Can I just verify that you want a separate division?
Yeah, I, I, the, the way my motion was made, I'm okay with it being under planning, 'cause I think that's where it belongs, 'cause businesses and economic development needs planning. But right now, it says housing and economic development, I would just make a new line item within that division called, that's what my motion was, planning, housing, and then the next one is economic development, instead of housing and economic development.
I guess it would be like a sixty-five point one-two-seven-two, I'm just making it up.
Yes, that, that would be a separate.
It's a separate division, so, what he's at, he's, he's stating is that we were just creating a new division, economic development division.
Perfect, thank you, Stuart.
Mr. Chair, we're still talking about planning, correct?
Yes, we're.
Well, we're finished with the planning, you just voted on it.
Now we're going to public works.
Well, the question I asked that question is, I actually have one simple question under the CSAs.
We already voted.
I know, we, I could ask now, or I could ask at another meeting when we're, when we're.
Why don't you ask at another meeting?
Well, if I understand the process, this is a temporary due pass.
Yeah.
He can bring it back up right now?
You could go, you can bring it back.
Bring it up right now?
Yeah, sure, yeah.
So, thank you, Ray or Stuart, are any of the CSAs underfunded and the counties using general fund to fund those CSAs?
There is not currently a, there are a few of the divisions under the CSAs that are underfunded for this coming year, mainly related to the road maintenance projects. We have been meeting with a lot of those different CSAs, we've held multiple, multiple meetings. And we're trying to address that issue specifically, if it should be brought back to a two eighteen process, if there can be any loan process for these, these specific CSAs. Any of those decisions will be brought back to, to the board.
So you'll give us a tally which, which CSAs are underfunded?
Yeah, we can, we can do a whole report on it, and we can bring that, bring that back to the board if that's the wish of the board.
All right, thank you.
Some of them are, are using their reserves for the road maintenance project.
Right, I understand that point.
I just wanna make that sure, that's stated too.
Yeah.
But there are some that don't have enough reserves and operating revenue to cover these road maintenance projects that are gonna go into effect in the next year. But we're working on some solutions, potentials, yeah, potential solutions for those, yeah.
Can I make one quick comment on that, Mr. Chair? I think one of the things that, I'm not sure if it applies to all of our CSAs are just in District Four, but one of the things we're looking at potentially doing, because some of these projects are, have been kinda languishing for quite a while, is doing, is a, is a loan essentially, and it's paid back. And I know that there's history of doing that with different wells and things like that for public safety matters, so, just a little clarity on that. I, I don't believe, and I don't think we should be spending one dollar of general fund without reimbursement on CSAs, and I don't think we are doing that.
Correct me if I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that's a two eighteen process, whereas they go back to the CSA and they, they have to.
That's correct.
We also are reexamining which CSA roads were actually pulled back into the county's base of roads. So we will be looking at, at that as well, of what funding sources should be paying for that.
And at the same time, you're looking at even if the roads were covered in the CSA, same, same analysis you're doing, correct?
Yes, that's gonna be done.
Thank you. Are you all right, Hymen?
Yes.
That takes us to the next one, the RMA Public Works, number seventy, which covers eighty-one, eighty-two, eighty-three, eighty-four, eighty-five, eighty-six.
So first off, I wanted to highlight the roads fund, because we are gonna be having a lot of projects going on in this coming year. First off, I did want to.
Repeat that for the record.
There are going to be a lot of projects happening in the next year on the road fund.
You heard that.
I did just wanna make a clarification so that the public's aware and, and, and the board. The adopted and recommended, the reason why there's such a discrepancy is because we've never actually spent that kind of money, that sixty-six million. It's been more closer to two to three million in the road fund. We wanted to actually identify what work is gonna be actually completed within the year. That's why the number is back down to about six point seven million. This includes some work on pro, our bridge projects that we have going on with the federal, with some federal funding. A new pothole project, which is closer to one million. The general funds contribution, which was discussed by the board, is gonna be about five hundred thousand. We're gonna be requesting some additional funding that's available at COG to cover the rest of the costs of that project. Additionally, there is some new equipment requests from the road crews that we are gonna identify some impact fee funds to cover, to help cover. Additionally, the John Smith outlay project, or maintenance project will be paid for out of the integrated waste management. That is also included within the road fund, the transfer from integrated waste management into the road fund to cover the cost of that road.
Just, once again, sorry to be so repetitive, but just for the record, once again, I wanna make sure everybody does understand that that John Smith is being paid. Just, once again, sorry to be so repetitive, but just for the record, once again, I wanna make sure everybody does understand that that John Smith is being paid by the enterprise.
That's correct.
One thing I'd like to add to that as well, Mr. Chair, if I may, is that we are not gonna stand idle either with the actual realignment of John Smith. We're gonna continue to move that forward. Obviously, that's one of our new R M A Director's list of to-dos, so that needs to keep moving forward as well, along with a lot of other road items that are falling, fall under his, his guise.
Thank you. Stuart, can I ask you a quick question on this before I lose sight of it? So, I know on tomorrow's agenda, we're gonna be dealing with a potholing item. We originally thought it was gonna, we allocated roughly nine-hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars. It come, it came out to, and this is from memory for tomorrow, but I wanna say three-twenty-five, three-fifty, so six-seventy-five, under seven-hundred thousand. Do we need to reduce that amount up here so you can use it in other road areas, or what are your thoughts on that?
So, well, first, I'm going to be talking to COG to see actually the correct balance that is there, because obviously, if we can use- Right, two sets of funding, there are two sets though, and one set we can't use for maintenance. I just wanna make sure-
Thank you.
But, but yeah, we, we're gonna try to obviously use the road funding first and foremost if, if we can, instead of using the general fund contribution. But we're just allocating this now in case we do need that to continue the potholing project. The, it didn't come down from one million to three-hundred-seventy-five thousand though, it was, that initial R F P was for five-hundred thousand, I do believe, and it came down to three-hundred-seventy-five. And then there's gonna be an additional potential project being brought to your board for Pinot, I believe. Okay, I just wanna make sure that's correct.
And for clarity, it was actually approved by the board to move forward with that road. That was part of what was unfortunately, well, there was an allocation on the R F P for half of that and excluding the Pinot road. But we were gonna go look out for funding for that, which I think we now have, so it's just a matter of addressing that, especially from an emergency basis.
Yeah, my point overall is, we appear allocated about nine-hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars for that, it's gonna come in less. I just don't wanna lose sight of that, because if we already allocated nine-eighty for road repairs, and what we're gonna do came in less, obviously, we have a lot more road repairs that we need to do. So I would like to see that difference to come back to us at some point and not disappear, so we can do more potholing work, temporary road repairs to get our roads more drivable.
So I, we, we had included in this allocation, because we put it into that new division, the updated costs. And then what I wanted to do was hopefully bring back with COG the actual amount that we still have for these, this other funding. And then the board can do a mid-year adjustment on additional projects that the board would like to work on.
That's perfect, thank you very much. That answered my question, thank you.
So I'll stop here on the roads fund and see if there's any other additional questions specifically on the roads fund.
Ongoing projects, the S B one general fund, maintenance of efforts, about a hundred-and-eighty thousand.
We, we have those S B one projects that are gonna be continuing, and the bridge projects. We are gonna be doing a review of the road fund in the next coming months to just make sure that we identify all the projects that are gonna be coming through here, because we do have a lot of allocations and appropriations for certain projects. And we wanna identify all those and bring that back to the board, a, a kind of finalized report, in a, in a more formal report format. In the general public works administration side, we had a one F T E change to add a staff services specialist to help out with some of the programs that are going on in an administrative function. Additionally, some of the ongoing contracts that you'll see within this division are our engineering pro, contracts. Our engineer, the engineer contracts are helping us a tremendous amount with the bridge and road projects and making sure that those are staying on course. Additionally, there was a public works inspector position that's needed to review some of these projects that will also be contracted out. But those were the highlights that I wanted to mention for the engineering and administrative division for the board and the public.
Mr. Chairman, I guess, Stuart, we talked about it when we had our individual meetings, and what I wanted to, what I asked you to kinda look into, and maybe our new R M A Director is getting a grasp on it as well, is where we're at. As far as some of the, the fee structure with some of the consulting services that we have in place at, in planning and public works. Are we getting adequate revenues coming back to offset the, the costs and kind of on the reimbursement, maybe? And if that's kinda on par for net county costs that most counties would expect, are we high or low? Or kinda, you know, for instance, we have the planning, some planners that we contract with for leave. I think they're supposed to be seventy-five percent cost recovery to them and twenty-five percent to the county for, you know, processing applications.
So, Mr. Chair, if I may, so again, we have a new R M A Director, he's brand new, he's only been here for-
Yeah, I'm not holding my two to three too hard on that, that's for sure.
But we, we have done, has allocated more positions, and in essence, really more funding, so it gives him the ability to address that, and also address the actual contracts that we have out right now. That, that's the mission that he has to work on, he has to look at it. But I'm sure he'll be coming back to the board soon with a full report to give kind of a, you know, where we're at with regards to relations to other counties, with regards to contract. There are a lot of other counties and city jurisdictions that use contract, contract for that, because of the highs and lows, economic, you know, the economics change and, you know, having contracted staff to, you know, look at planning or plans or other things. And when it's busy, it ramps up, and so they hire those, those individuals to come in to help out. And then when things slow down, they don't have to come to work. But I, but I, you know, I think this is really important, I think that there's definitely a need for these particular positions that we have outlined, and it gives him the ability to address, you know, that.
Yeah, I, I truly believe we're in a better spot today than what we were a few, just a few years ago, as far as cash flow, and making sure we're, okay. You know, making sure that, you know, as revenue comes in, revenue is recorded and deposited in the appropriate ledger. But I, I'm just curious how that balance is working out, whether or not this board should be taking another look at it, and so-
Yeah, and that's what, we'll be coming back to your board with that, I think it's important.
I do know that the R M A staff has been really focusing on trying to dial in, using the E R P system and making sure that when we have an engineer that's working on a bridge or a road project, that those costs are actually being identified in the road and bridge, under the road fund. So, I, I think there's, needs more discussion and more of a review to make sure that we are, are handling that appropriately. But I do know the R M A staff is currently working on making that process better.
Very good, thank you.
Are there any other questions on the engineering and admin division? So I just wanted to highlight the capital improvement fund as well. Additionally, this one has gone down from forty-eight million in the previous year to ten million, and that's because a couple of our projects are actually being finalized within this year. Might have some run over into the coming year, that has also been included as well, especially the jail project has some run over into our coming year. Again, with the July expected construction finished and additional communications and other equipment going in through October. That being said, both the jail and the solar project are being finalized, so those are no longer included for that large upfront cost from, that we had in fiscal year eighteen-nineteen. Some of the new projects that are gonna be coming out is the transitional housing project, that's a sevented fund coming out of H S A for that project. Additionally, the Hall of Records renovation and repurposing has been included as a project. The board had in a, in previous years, allocated a certain amount of fund balance for that project, it's about two million dollars. That is outlined in the capital expenditure list, that's found at the back of the budget book, for anybody that wants to review the list. This capital fund budget includes a general fund contribution of approximately four-point-five million. And additionally, we had identified additional funding from the tobacco fund, there's about seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars that's in there. That's a buildup of interest that we can actually use toward capital projects, so we identified that funding that we can actually use for the coming year to help offset some of the general fund costs that would be. So I just wanted to highlight that and make sure that the board is aware of the, the capital improvement list that is in the back of the budget book as well. I know we had gone over that at the previous meeting, additionally, there has not been any changes to that since that previous meeting to today. Are there any questions from the board on this specific division or fund?
Mr. Chair, I got a question, on the capital improvement project for the parks, under Vets Park Improvement General, you have two-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand, do you have a breakdown of that?
Adam, did you have a breakdown of what that could be used for?
Good morning. So that's a rollover project, it's been on the books for a couple of years, waiting for availability to get to it. It's, scope has changed a little bit over those years, I think now it's gonna focus primarily on just the restrooms, and making as many of them new and accessible and low maintenance and all that stuff as possible. There was gonna be some work on like some of the barbecue pits, things like that, so the scope is still a little bit in flux, depending on what the main issues are when that project gets started.
My, my apologies, but you said a word, availability, to get to it. You've been, we've been rolling this project over and over. Are we doing it ourselves, or are we contracting that out?
Well, we have to manage everything, right? We have to get it designed and then get it bid.
So we, we do all the designs ourselves, and then we contract it out, or?
We don't have time for that anymore, so it's usually, the design work is consulted out-
Okay.
In addition to obviously the construction, but the oversight and procurement of all of those contracts and quality of work has to be done anyhow.
So when do you think we can get that done?
Still looking at the schedule for next year, but we have some discussions on that coming up to figure out when that can happen.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Adam, are we gonna have like a timeline for when, you know, or actually, and even with this, this new budget, are you, are you feel like it's gonna be able to support you in, in addressing those needs and how to have better expectations with that timeline?
Well, it's, it, this meeting, I guess, is a little bit timely. One thing moving forward that's gonna affect this is I will be leaving the county in one month from last Friday. So my job over the next month is to button up whatever projects I can and help with the transition of the others. And so I'll certainly be meeting with Harry, the new director and administration, to figure out how to keep these moving.
Well, thank you very much, and good luck in your next endeavor.
Mr. Chair, one last thing, so Adam, is there any focus on, I, two things, one is, I know Bertha Briggs is supposed to get upgraded, so what is, what is the thought? Like what are you trying to do with upgrading that, that, that building? And then the last thing, is there anything in the budget to support that, that Vets Large Field which we manage?
There, there's nothing currently in the budget for any of the, the fields. The four park projects are the Bertha Briggs renovation, the Vets Park improvements, which is probably all gonna be taken up for the restrooms. Lighting for the parking lot at Vets Park, and then the water source, the potable water source at Historical Park. So there's nothing in there for any of the fields right now. That hasn't been really expressed as, as a concern as much as those other items I just mentioned. Bertha Briggs would involve, there's a lot of accessibility and maintenance and safety issues there, so basically with the budget that's there would be to address as many of those as possible. Wouldn't be an entirely new building, but obviously bathrooms would be enlarged, doors, you know, corrected, thresholds, things like that, paving.
Okay. So, I, I get it, this is probably gonna be a Vets Park Commission thing, so maybe I could address it that way.
I think we're having one in July, I believe.
Yeah, it's the first. So I'll, I'll bring it up there. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
So, just, Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, just a reminder that, just for my own reminder, I guess, park impact fees, which that's where it's coming from, it's supposed to be used for new facilities, right? Not, not renovate current facilities.
It'd be for any kind of improvements.
Any kind of improvements, this is the first time I hear this, okay.
Which serve new growth, so like if you're repurposing an existing facility to make it more efficient, to, let's say that you're converting maybe a storage room in a library to existing, maybe more public space. It's, it's to serve new growth, you can't just use it for, you know, any purpose at all.
Yeah, no, no, you're, you're right, that's correct. So, so these projects that were identified would help expand the use of the parks and offer, you know, greater accommodation, the bathrooms would be bigger.
So, so if, say, say if the, the literally wants to have a net, and they're asking the county to pay for it, is that an allowable expense under the impact fees?
Not necessarily according to that.
Well, let's say whether you're putting in like five new volleyball courts, that could potentially be an expenditure, because you're allowing, you're increasing volleyball courts. Let's say you're re-striping and you're adding five new baseball fields, you know, you're increasing the usability of that field, so it's kind of a fact-specific question. But if you're just replacing one net that was old with a new net that's newer, but you're not increasing any services, then that-
Okay, okay. Good, and then, thank you, Adam, and then for Stuart, I see that under the cannabis, we're expecting thirty-five thousand dollars, and that we're gonna use that as a vehicle purchase. How much money have we gotten as of today under the cannabis, not, not the hemp, but marijuana?
Uh, I don't have the-
It's very little, right?
Sorry to put you on the spot, but-
There's Karen, thank you, she's scared.
So far, you know, what we've received is the application fees, which is a deposit, and we've taken in a hundred-and-eight thousand dollars for that. But that's just to handle the applications themselves. This is just kind of a, you know, at this point in time, we really don't know what the needs are for the cannabis program. These costs would be covered by their, their annual fee. We don't know if we'll need more staffing or not, we, we wouldn't purchase it unless we had a, had a need, or we needed to have staff out and about.
Perfect, thank you.
You said a hundred-and-eight K, how many applicants were there?
Ten.
Ten, thank you.
Perfect, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any public comment? Bring it back to the board? Is there a motion on the floor?
Temporary due pass, Mr. Chair?
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Five zero?
Aye.
Five zero.
I'm a little behind, sorry.
Uh, you know, I'm gonna be nice, if you wanna take another minute and a half break, or if you wanna go forward.
I think, I think the rest is procedural, I think we can get this done soon.
I just wanna make sure.
Yeah, just kidding.
We're good.
I got consensus, everybody knows.
You got that, right? Peter, can't change your mind.
We're good, okay.
So let's go to our final budget deliberations, resolution to adopting the G A N limit.
Go ahead, Stuart, you can go ahead and take this, if you don't mind. So there, there is a link to the G A N limit on the, on the document. Basically, this is just a procedural resolution that's adopted by every county and jurisdiction everywhere in California. Basically, this is just a procedural resolution that's adopted by every county and jurisdiction everywhere in California.
Can you, can you, excuse my language here, but can you dummy down the GAN limit and kind of just give us a quick explanation?
Yeah.
In, in my terms, not in the financial terms, please.
This might be a good highlight in the budget book for anybody from the public or the board that wishes to read, but the GAN limit was adopted by Proposition Four. This is in the back of our, our budget book, just to give a highlight. But basically, we cannot, there's a factor percentage that is adopted every year by each county, and we cannot collect taxes and have appropriations over that limit, and the GAN limit is what we would be adopting today, and that, does, does that kind of...
Thank, yes, thank you.
Yeah, but there's a, a little bit of a discussion back here on, on how it was, it was created and, and how it came about. We use a base year, which was from seventy-eight, seventy-nine, and we adjust for population and cost of living for the GAN limit.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
And this, this is in, as exhibit with the resolution for the GAN limit, but the GAN limit for fiscal year nineteen twenty is thirty-eight point three million dollars. And we are below the appropriation with our, with the revenues and taxes that we are collecting.
Any comment? Any public comment? Bring it back to the board. What's the wish of the board?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution twenty nineteen dash sixty-five.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five zero. Now we'll go to the adoption of recommended budget resolution, schedules one through fifteen, authorized positions, fixed assets, capital improvements. Take us home.
Additionally, this is the resolution that would be adopted by the board for the recommended budget as the appropriations limit for the coming year, which was of the one hundred forty-three million that was identified at the beginning of the presentation. This will include Exhibits A, which is the recommended budget revisions that I had brought to the board. We will be including the revision that was asked by the board for the...
The one fifty.
Reduction of the one hundred fifty thousand from the library. We're gonna be putting that together for the public's viewing as well, because we won't be bringing the adopted budget until after the auditing office has done the cleanup for the year end and has gotten us the finalized numbers for eighteen nineteen, which is a estimated actual column that has to be included on the adopted schedules that are submitted to the State Comptroller's Office. So this will be submitted as a, an additional document with the recommended budget to... Well, now it's gonna be a decrease of appropriations in total.
So once again, the only change in our budget right now is a hundred and fifty thousand dollar reduction.
And the two that we had identified at the beginning, which was, I'll identify those again.
Those were administrative, right?
Yes.
The name?
We had administrative corrections, but these two adjustments, which was the New Roads Division, two-two-seven-five, which is for the pot hauling project and the, the Integrated Waste...
Yes.
Transfer for the John Smith.
And also the change in the division.
Yeah. And...
The change in the division from housing and economic development.
To the, to split it to, and the one FTE accounting technician to auditor division.
You know what, we're seeing here is really not too much of a change, and that's a direct reflection on you. You've done a great job in administering this, this budget. And I look at my four colleagues up here that spend a lot of their time meeting with everyone in their departments, meeting with you personally, and it's amazing, because I've been told that some of these budgets in the previous years would take weeks? Is that right?
Yeah, a week. A week.
Yeah, so I mean, hats off to yourself. You've, you've done a terrific job, and, you know, I see Melinda out there, and in the past, she's been in your seat there, but keep up the good work. But just passing the budget is only the beginning. Now it's micromanaging it and making sure that we have the right expenditures, and then looking at our new RMA Director is bringing that revenue in. And it's looking at that EDC, the EDC people in the near future, is bringing us businesses so we can actually increase our revenue, which will in turn will be able to spend that money on the needed services.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments from our board?
No, you just said it all. That was good.
Any comments from the public? Of course, Ms. Valerie.
Gentlemen, first of all, I'd like to thank you for the oversight on the Vets Park, because that's sorely needed. However, what I wanted to talk about for just a moment was that Morgan Hill is creating an industrial park, a tech park that is large and highly controversial in that area. However, there are businesses waiting for that park to be developed, and I see no reason why our Economic Development Group can't leapfrog over that where we have facility already waiting.
Thank you.
So, just an FYI. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Any additional public comment? We'll bring it back to the board. What's the wish of the board?
Make a motion to approve Resolution two thousand nineteen dash sixty-six, Mr. Chair?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Five, zero. Well, I guess with that being said, we will end our budget hearings, and we'll look forward to tomorrow. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, five zero. See you tomorrow, nine o'clock.